Okay, call to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to the community, this is the time for citizens who would like to address the commission on any non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of the public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda, or responding to criticism. Mr. Sonny Colbreath would like to address the commission.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and commissioners. All I wanted to do is say, I just came from the Liberty Water Meeting at the church. If you know someone that was there and it's still going on and want to get caught up, I would encourage you to speak with them. I've been gone all summer. I didn't know things were quite as bad as they have been made to be known tonight. It's kind of interesting. But I did want to remind all of you that next Monday, again, I want to be out of town, but next Monday, there is a meeting to go over the Camelback Park and the Camelback Wall information. And there's been some changes from what we were first shown, but I would just encourage you as a commission, just so you're in the know, to be there and be knowledgeable of what they're planning for the park. I'm not saying it's bad or anything, because we're going to gain over an acre by moving the wall. But there's a, I understand there's a little bit different configuration for the parking lot, and they're not going to be recommending the grass block as we were told that would happen. So for whatever reasons, they've had to change that plan. But as a commission, I think that'd be something you'd be interested in, to be there for that. And I want to thank you for everything you do in the community, and I appreciate it. So that's all I have. And it's at the church, is that correct?
Saint Peter's.
Trish, can I ask you to send a calendar invite to the commission? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Response to call to the community, we had nobody that was a community member speaking at our last commission meeting, so we can skip right through that. Public Works Monthly Report presenter Kyle Ames, Director of Public Works.
Chairman Taddy, commissioners, just a couple bigger items that I'd like to go over. Obviously, most of you guys have seen them. See how the Christmas lights has completed the wrapping of the palm trees and orange trees in the center of town. We did add a few extra trees in this year's decorations, the larger pine trees in front of the memorial gazebo. We felt like it would be a newly added addition, and it made it look a whole lot different than last year. So we were really happy with that. C O D will be back on November, I have it in here on the 15th, they actually changed it to November 16th. They will be decorating the flagpole as a lighted Christmas tree. So we're excited to see what that's going to look like as well. And staff, Public Works staff will be installing the rest of the Christmas decorations on the week of the 20th. We have a scheduled lift to come in, so we can start installing those as well. Overseeing is complete, we just wrapped it up this week. A lot of it's taken fairly well. We're working on a couple of problem areas, a lot of weed that's been sprayed. I know there's some yellowing in certain areas, but that'll eventually come back with fertilizer. Trish and I met with Altitude Recreation to kind of explore some ideas for a playground structure or child structure, climbing structure for the tennis court area. There's a dirt spot that's located right next to the tennis courts there, as well as a preschool play structure as well. So we're still in the process of figuring out what we're, what we're going to consider we'll bring to RPG in the future. This might be a CIP project for next year. Other than that, that's most of the main stuff, little things here and there. We've been working with Arizona Game and Fish to see if we can get on an annual stocking program. Tricia and I and the city manager met with Arizona Game and Fish this week, so we're still kind of working on those, those issues of pros and cons. It's kind of leaning towards cons, I would say, but we'll definitely get something figured out going into the future. Other than that, that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions?
On the fish, so remind me, how is, how would this be different than what the city currently does?
So the city, we, we only stock the lake with the trout, 750 pounds of trout when we do the fishing derby in January. This, Arizona Game and Fish would stock it four times annually?
Ten total.
Ten total.
Yeah.
Ten total.
Ten times a year?
Ten times, but different, different breeds of fish.
Yeah.
But there is a cost share. So the weighing of what we pay as a city versus what Game and Fish would charge us is significantly higher than what we currently pay just to stock what we stock. We're going to explore some other options of fish habitats. The habitats need to be placed out inside that lake for the smaller spawn to be safe so they can grow and then they can produce, and that helps with that, I guess, ecosystem inside that lake. So we're going to explore those options as well. But as of right now, yeah, it's, we only stock it about once, once a year.
If you stock it ten times a year, is that not going to encourage fishing 24/7?
Yeah, so that was the, one of the downs, uh, cons of Arizona Game and Fish, it being an Arizona Game and Fish urban lake, is that it would be essentially open to the public. It would be posted that this lake is being stocked at this time, and you're going to get an influx of traffic coming into this lake. Also, it would require them to have a state fishing license versus a city-issued fishing license. So that would be another revenue that we would lose with the rec if that, if that was the case. It would be regulated by the state of the fishing, with the fishing license. So, you know, game warden, sheriff, would have to enforce it. We could always put it into the city code that, you know, Avondale PD could enforce it as well. But it would definitely increase a lot more traffic.
Could we still have a fishing derby?
We could, but it would change the dynamics significantly as well, because as of right now, they told us there would still be limits on the catch. And for the drought derby, obviously, those are waived. So it would definitely change things, which was another reason that we, you know, weighing the pros and cons.
Still that age, if it's not broke, why fix it, kind of thing? Why change the procedure after all these years?
Yeah, I was wondering what's driving the, into it.
So what are the pros? What would the advantages be?
Annual stocking. It would be more stocking of fish. To be honest, I think that would be the only.
It, yeah, it seems that it turns out that that might be the only thing, the only benefit in the long run, is they would be stocking it routinely. That would drive in more people, for sure. Because it would turn it to a community lake that would be advertised through Game and Fish and would be open to all.
Commissioner Gertz?
What would be the decision-making process in that? Is that something that would have public comment, or would we, until, is that a council or staff decision?
I think it would be a staff decision, and obviously budget, the cost. Cost would be the deciding factor for that.
I would recommend that in order to avoid or preempt, you'll get feedback regardless, right? That if you're going to make a change, that there needs some community input, otherwise you're going to get it after the fact.
If, we had already talked about, if there was going to be a change, consider that we would do something similar to Camelback.
I see.
Where we would approach the residents.
Okay.
For sure, especially those along that area.
Yeah.
Would consider the cost of maybe just stocking it twice a year. Or it seems like it'd be a big jump to go from once to ten times. Maybe there's something in the middle where we just stock it, you know, a couple more times a year, and it's still cheaper but has more fish.
The costs of fish have significantly increased over the years, and we're expecting to increase again this year. And I'm not necessarily sure if it's just the fish in general, or if it's transportation, you know, the labor costs, fuel costs. I think that's the reason why a lot of this stuff is going up for this delivery of this fish. But yeah, it's, every year is probably going to increase until we hit some kind of leveling point where we decide to look at a different option. Maybe it'd be cheaper for us, or for the city to go to Arizona, Arizona Game and Fish in the future. But as of right now, it's, it's going to be more for Arizona Game and Fish versus the city that's doing it.
Oh, that's a question. Um, what's the, you happen to know what the closest lake is that it's stocked by Arizona Game and Fish?
Friendship Park.
Friendship, I think.
Okay.
Buckeye, also Sundance.
Okay.
Is, uh, there's a number of them in Avondale, and then I think Buckeye, those are all the closest ones.
Friendship's the one right on McDowell?
I, I would, my, my comment on Friendship is they can support the traffic with all the land they have. I don't, I don't see that that's going to do our, be very neighborly to the people that live around that lake.
There's not really houses next to that lake anyways.
Right.
Yeah, that's the same with Sundance. It's got, and there's plenty of parking.
Where's the, um, the dirt patch, the tennis court? Is that by the dumpster area?
No, it's on the northwest side, you know, where the picnic tables are.
Yeah.
Where, so, just north of that. It's right behind the wall there.
Thirty feet long, right?
Right near the tennis, yes, inside the wall?
About fifty, I think, about fifty, yeah. About fifty, fifty and.
Fifty by twenty?
About, yeah, not quite twenty or something, yeah.
And we're very limited on what we're going to be able to put in.
Yeah.
Um, because of fall zones. There's not a lot of fall zones there.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, one que, um, do you know how many trees you're taking out and how many you're putting in, the orange trees?
Yeah, twenty-two. We've removed twenty-two so far. The issue that we're running into right now is the same as last year and the year before, the orange trees, trying to find them. They're not very mature. They're two or three feet tall and sticks. I've pretty much contacted every nursery in the valley, and they're all the same. Fortunately, they all buy them from the same supplier. The only ones that actually have large, decent orange trees is Moon Valley Nursery, which you're going to pay the price for.
And we're seeing a lot of these trees up and down Litchfield that are losing limbs, and they're just older?
Yeah, they've, they've hit their plateau of life, and this brutal summer and low water pressure this summer didn't help at all. We're trying to save them the best we can. We actually started a new fertilizing program. We may have talked about this in a previous meeting. We, Public Works actually was able to purchase a injecting system for deep root injecting, so we have just started that as of last week. So we are going to try to save all the current orange trees as long as we can. But they, they do have a life just like anything else. They, some of these orange trees are, you know, forty, fifty, sixty years old.
I've heard you're lucky if you get forty years out of them.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
I mean, if, if we maintain them, fertilize them, you know, give them the proper water, they'll, they'll survive, you know, and they'll, they'll prolong themselves. But like I said, you know, with this summer and low water pressure issues, it definitely didn't help.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Community and Recreation Services Monthly Report presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. The monthly report is in your packet. I'll review a couple of items. Odyssey Swim Team's final practices of season was last week, last Thursday, so they are officially done for the season, and our pool is essentially closed until we start back up with lifeguard training in the spring. Preschoolers have been having a lot of fun this last month. They have invited parents to come in and speak to our preschoolers about their jobs, which you would think with preschool might be hard to do, but it has been very fun for these kids and parents. We've had, our city manager, Matthew Williams, has a child in preschool. He came in and spoke to the kids and gave them little toy vehicles and everything as handouts. We had a army transportation coordinator who came in uniform, which the kids just loved. We've had a, a professional chef, a baker, who actually is part of this most recent Halloween Bake Off on the Food Network. We had a Diamondbacks Rally, I forget what they're called, the Rally People, one of the Cheer People, and a podiatrist who taught the kids all about how to take care of their feet and, and, so the kids and the parents have had, are really having a blast with this. It's new that they started this year, and they'll probably carry it forward. Yeah. As long as parents are interested. In terms of special events, as you guys know, the Fall Festival was this past weekend. It was a beautiful weekend, and lots of people came out. We had a featured artist with large sculpture art who was out for the first time at our festival and was a little nervous about whether her items, because they were so big and invaluable, would sell at our event. And she had at least three of them, three pieces, sell. So that's really wonderful, and it's great to push back out to the artists to generate more interest in the fine art coming and being sold in our community. So that was really nice. And obviously, as you guys have seen, the light, the holiday lighting that Kyle has put in place was such a big attraction and talking point for these artists and vendors this past weekend that, I think that will also encourage them to come out, because they just felt the community looked so beautiful. It was really nice. Our first Arts in the Park concert is coming up this Sunday. For anyone that's interested and available, Cold Shot and the Hurricane Horns will be on the Wiggle on Front Lawn from three to five, so we're looking forward to having our season openers back out there and performing for the community. We're looking for a nice crowd, and APS is actually sponsoring that concert. So we appreciate that sponsorship. All these concerts are free because of sponsors like them. Our upcoming Touch a Truck event for those with children and grandchildren is Saturday, November 18th, our second annual. And from nine to noon, we'll be out at Litchfield Elementary School's South Parking Lot. We've got Public Works, First Responders, Avondale PD, Goodyear Fire, Aiken Gardner, the post office is bringing a vehicle out, lots of cool vehicles, NASCAR, so. Yeah. It's going to be a good time again, and it's expanded a little bit from last year. So we're looking forward to putting on that free event as well. And if you know any people with children, young children with sensory issues, we will be having from nine to 10 that morning is a quiet hour. So the kids can come out, view the vehicles, touch them, but there won't be any horns, any of that, that stuff blowing and going off to, to concern them or frighten them. So that's an element we're kind of proud of to introducing to the community. And other than that, I will let you tell, I will let Pat tell you how well sports are going.
Uh, thank you, Tricia. Uh, so we are entering Week Seven of Fall Sports, so this is the last weekend of the 2023 Fall Season. Majority of the time it went well, I think everyone enjoyed themselves. Winter registrations is the last full week of registration for our winter basketball and T-ball season. That closes on Monday. We have about, we have 288 total participants, 244 in basketball and 44 in T-ball. We had over, we had just about a hundred kids registered in the last week compared to last week, so our numbers did increase tremendously. And I think with the Week Seven and last day reminders, we'll get more kids registered before it closes. So we're excited to get that started underway. And then next Saturday is our Adult Cornhole Tournament. We have sixteen teams registered for that. We did cap it at sixteen currently, so that we can ensure at least we have even brackets, but we are accepting wait lists. And if we get enough teams on the wait list to increase the brackets to make sure that we can do the scheduling, we'll, we'll get those added in time as well. But it just all depends on how many teams go on the wait list in order to do that, so. And that is about all for sports.
Are there any questions? I have a question. Are they doing a Veterans Day memorial service down at the school again?
Um, I haven't heard anything.
No?
Usually provide flags, I love and have.
You're talking about Aguafria's, the district one, or LES?
I know LES had done one, was it last year?
Aguafria did a real big one last year and year before.
Yeah.
When, am I thinking of the wrong holiday?
Did they Memorial Day?
Oh, possibly Memorial Day.
Ah, it was Veterans Day.
Are they doing a flag raising here?
We did one actually this morning for the Marines and for veterans, yeah. They have nice attendance this morning, and the flag kids from Litchfield Elementary were out and participated, so that was nice as well.
All right. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, guys. Approval of Minutes presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. The October 12th draft meeting minutes are in your packet, and I will entertain a motion if anyone is ready to do so. If you need a minute to review, that's fine.
I'll move to approval minutes.
Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Minutes from last month are approved. Yard of the Quarter presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. The tally results for Yard of the Quarter nominees are in your packet. We had two nominations for the third quarter, 417 East Palm Street that had a total of 145 points, and 205 North Neal and Ave that had a total of 122 points. Thank you to all of you who got your nominations in. And I would say that the clear winner was 417 East Palm Street, and happy to share that news if you guys are good with that.
Please do. Are there any, ooh, I'm sorry.
Also want to say a quick thank you to Chairman Taddy, who came to the last council meeting to present the Yard of the Quarter certificate to our winners. By proxy, their landscaper came, and so that was fun to, to have him there and be part of the council meeting that way, too.
He seemed like he was really appreciative, and it was nice to, you know, shake his hand and say congratulations.
Yeah, he brought his daughter and everything, so.
Yeah, it was nice.
Yeah.
We should, are, so are we going to continue that? I think maybe that's something we should continue, moving forward?
I don't see why not. I think it's a, a nice opportunity to continue to try and expand the Yard of the Quarter program.
Are you saying they'll invite them to the city council meeting?
Yeah.
Present them as their award.
So they are, but I was thinking having the commissioners there as well, to kind of give that push to the community and have that connection between the commission and the council.
Push it on social media, see if we get more likes, more people checking it out. Food for thought, right? Is that it, guys?
Yeah.
That can't be it.
Which, which quadrant are we supposed to be in this quarter?
Quadrant one is next up.
Ooh, number one.
Which area is that?
I'll shoot you. I'll send you guys the map again.
Yeah, right.
And double check what, what your focus is, so that you guys all have that. Thank you. I don't recall it off the top of my head.
I got a feeling we're going to get community, I think this is going to be the one, where we get the community nominations coming in. Okay. Commissioner Report on Current Events. This is the time commissioners may present a brief summary on current events. The commission may not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take any legal action on any of the information presented pursuant A R S 38 dash 431 oh two. Commissioner Colbreath?
A couple things. So I think the new Christmas lights look really good this year, especially the lights on the big trees. I think that's a good, good addition this year. And, yeah, I went to the Arts Festival over the weekend with the family, and it was enjoyable as usual, so it's a good time, good event. That's all.
All right, thank you. Mister Fix?
I unfortunately only was able to spend about twenty minutes at the Arts Festival. I've been busy and family in town, but they were really impressed about the level of the festival. They, they just thought it was going to be a small, little community festival, and they were very pleased. So they're going to come back next November and try to go again. But I have to commend Public Works for all the work that you guys have done cleaning up our city after this crazy summer. It was so sad coming back and seeing everything so dry and dead. And the lights look amazing, so kudos for those.
Thank you.
I'll pile on, on the festival, but the lights are like another level, really.
Yes, they are.
Truly taking advantage of our assets of having large trees that the city's down, so it looks really good.
Very classy.
Commissioner Fix?
I have nothing new to add, but yes, the city definitely does look good and the festival. Not spent much time there, but as I, as I went by, it was packed.
So I, I think the lights are, are just, they kind of take your breath away. They're so, they're, they're so big, and they're so, very well done. Very impressed. And I was nervous, because you guys had said that this is the first time we hired them, right? Or no?
We had them last year.
Second time, okay. Well, I knew they were new, I guess. But awe-inspiring is probably a word, a description I would use, awe-inspiring. The festival was wonderful, as they always are. My kids got lost for an hour and just walking around, which is a good sign. And thank you guys for all the work on the trees. This summer was brutal. Everybody's yard is devastated in one way, shape, or form. And the fact that we survived it intact, you know, there's a lot for you guys. So thank you. Anything else? Anything else? Well, that leaves only, oh, topics for referral to City Council, we have nothing. Now, that leaves only one thing left.
Do you like a motion to adjourn?
I would. Maybe...
I'd motion to adjourn.
One second.
Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor of adjournment? Aye. All opposed? We are adjourned.
You need your gavel.
I know.